It's only Board of Appeals meeting is a workshop for two properties.
Thank you.
And we will be reviewing the applications to make sure everything's in order for a public hearing. We won't be voting on anything or making any kind of judgments or probing questions as to why things are happening or why things are not happening. So Karen, you're in charge of both of these. Would you like to pick one to go first?
I was afraid you were gonna, I was hoping you were gonna pick one.
That's fine, because I have a sitter, so go for it.
We've got, um...
I had no rush either, so.
We've got Garden Street being distributed here. Should we just go with that?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, Karen.
Thanks. Okay, Tara, let's, that's us.
I'm excited to see what they're doing because you bought the house from me.
Oh, you're kidding.
Twenty-sixth Garden.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, I did.
My grandfather built the house. So we're excited to see what you're doing.
You're kidding. So you know it intimately.
I thought you were on the TV.
Yeah. I was on it for twelve to thirteen years the first time and I was off a couple of years and back on it again. Back on it again.
I did bring copies of the deed because we did purchase this front yard. Can I give you? I only made three copies.
I just want to see if it's for you.
So. I believe so. Yeah, fifty-two or fifty-three.
I have to, I have to know this because slipping, my sister's arguing with me.
Oh, you're kidding.
Telling me the house was built in fifty. I said, "It wasn't built in fifty."
No, not fifty.
I know it wasn't built in fifty. The house I'm living in now is built in fifty-five.
Uh-huh.
So I said, "The house was built in fifty-two or fifty-three."
I think fifty-two.
Yeah. So now, like a legal document, like another, just because you're my little sister, it doesn't matter.
Is this complete or your sister comes out?
Carolyn.
Carolyn. She's out in west, out west, right?
No, she was back.
Oh, she did. Oh, okay.
She lives on Constitution Road.
Oh, you're kidding.
All right. Should've like sorted them.
That's all right. Don't worry about it. We got six seconds.
Okay.
And, um... We'll just start listening to you right now, Karen.
Okay.
Start and we can start referring to materials.
So first of all, this is Tara O'Sullivan, the homeowner.
Hi.
And the property is twenty-sixth Garden Street. I'm proposing some residential alterations and porch addition on the front, which is the main request for the variance. And there is a small open landing on the northerly side of the property, which we're proposing to enclose and also add a stair. So just to just quickly explain that the property originally fell over the property line onto Village Property. So Tara and John recently purchased this parcel from the village so that their existing building, which sat well over the property line, is on their property. So this is the deed which reflects that purchase, which wasn't included in the original package.
Okay. Okay. This will go with the new package.
So that's the original.
So when was this purchase made?
This purchase was made in June. It was finalized on the twenty-first.
And does the survey reflect it, do you say, the new one?
It, it shows, the survey shows it as an area to be acquired, but it's now been acquired. So it does reflect the appropriate needs and bounds and so.
So where is that again? What section again?
So that is this section here.
Wow.
Basically, right between the sidewalk and so.
And that's just, that was formerly Village Property? Okay.
Yeah.
Most of Garden Street.
Okay.
Yeah, most of Garden Street. So for some reason, the property lines gone kind of through the front of a good many houses on those streets.
Everything is done?
Yeah.
For the long time, it's right.
That's the two overs and a pizza.
Yeah.
That's when it jumps back around. Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, so first of all, to kind of legalize what was sitting on the property and to open up the possibility of working on that portion of the house and also to make the improvements we're proposing to add. So right now, the existing house is a one-story house, which occupies this footprint. And there is a very steep concrete stoop going up to the front door, which we're proposing to remove and replace with a front porch and a new stair down to grade that's actually directed toward the existing driveway to make access.
Coming that way instead of coming to the street?
Correct.
Okay.
And on the northerly side of the house, right now, this little square is an existing concrete stoop with aluminum on it or wood over it. It's actually got posts down. It's like a metal post in there. So that we're proposing to enclose and become conditioned space part of the house. It's kind of like a back to my room entry. And then to improve the access up to that, we're proposing a small covered porch outside the door and a new stair down to grade.
Will the stair be covered or just the porch sharing?
Just the porch, right.
And so it's sort of an extension. It's gonna be a full, uh, you know, roof?
Roof over this porch and then this sort of.
Coming out over the window. There's a window?
Um...
Coming close to it and not covering it?
Close to it, yes. Yeah. And so this is in the side yard setback already and we're enclo- proposing to enclose that. So we're essentially increasing the non-conformity. We're not increasing the footprint, but the porch is increasing because the stair, which is shown by the dash line.
So what is the width of the property here? Is this a small lot? Does this fall under that definition?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
It's fifteen point oh eight feet or what?
So it's a small lot definition.
One-twenty-five feet?
Seven point five feet, right?
Or one?
It's one hundred plus, they just added twenty, so it's now.
One-twenty.
Right. But it was a hundred feet from the original property line.
It was controversial when we were trying to sell.
So this will be seven point five feet for each side, a total of, um, the footage times, um, to get the overall need, um, setback, side yard setbacks. I forget, it was one thirty-four, seven point seven. Anyway, just try and guess what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay. Go, keep going.
Okay. So in addition to the porches, which, which we're proposing on the front and side of the property, the existing house is one-story, one-story now and we're proposing to take the entire roof off and create a half-story second floor. So we're basically doing that by increasing the roof pitch and constructing it on top of the floor plates.
The whole length?
Correct, the whole length. So, um, so basically, that's an A-seven. It's kind of a section through the building now where you can see the existing roof line, which has a shallow roof pitch.
And this is the basement?
This is the basement, the first floor and the attic, current attic. So the existing roof, we're proposing to take off and increase the roof pitch so that we can actually accommodate what's technically by code a half-story second floor.
What's total height?
The total height, well, as it's defined by code, it's about eighteen feet. So by code, it's the average from the grade to the midpoint of a gable roof.
Mm-hmm.
So right now, it's about fifteen feet and we're increasing it to about eighteen feet. The actual difference from the peak to, the existing peak to the new peak is about five feet, two inches, give or take. And that's on A-seven in here.
So there's nothing there with regards to the heights, the height extension need for a garden set?
That's, that's correct. So I just didn't know in terms of, you know, adding the second story on the existing roof line, if that requires any sort of variance or because.
It does go into the side yard setbacks and front yard.
Actually, the main, the main house does not fall inside yard setback, but it does fall helpfully into the front yard setback. So the sides, we do have ten feet. The only part that's moving into the side is this covered entry.
Question, are you starting, are you leaving this that way?
No, no, we're coming all the way out.
So you're coming all the way out to the front of, okay. So there's, okay.
Yeah, because it's the same footprint, it, it doesn't matter. I, I, my, my understanding, it doesn't matter unless you guys know anything different.
Okay. And then there's just this one section here where the existing building steps in about maybe four.
That's the porch.
What was the form of porch.
Yeah, okay.
So that, in that section, the new construction of the roof will overhang that. So this, that is a variant. However, that's still within, this is the most extreme portion of the.
Okay. I was just thinking with regards to the roof, um, you know, because you're making changes here, even though it's height and it's within the limitations of what height can be for a structure residential, uh, it's, you are making an improvement to the house and it is the same footprint, but that footprint does extend into the, uh, front yard setback. So almost indirectly, again, for a second reason, it brings in, it brings in the front yard setback issue. It makes revising. Now, this is gonna be enclosed, right, as you say?
This will be an open porch on the front. So right now, there's what was a front porch that's already enclosed, was enclosed previously. So the front door enters directly into the house.
Yeah. So what's this distance from the now new property line, which you brought up to today here?
Two, here is twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Yeah. And so the new, this new proposed porch, this is a side view, is open. It's basically a new covered entry and steps going up the front, so from the front of the house. You can see the increased roof line and the enclosed porch and then the drive, the stairs heading down to the side.
Can I hand out the A-three?
I think they're all stapled together, but except, um...
Yeah, they're all together.
The new ones are all part of.
Yeah, I see from the new upstairs, there's the, the door mark that comes down on the south, north side.
Yes, yeah. And now, that is actually within all of the setbacks.
Yeah, so there's no variance needed for that or it's just all one bit.
Let's take a look at the worksheet. Does anybody have any more questions about the project?
No. Is the building inspectors, uh?
Yeah.
Denial it?
Referrals, they're called.
What are they called?
Referrals.
Oh, wow. Call job security.
So that makes sense to me. The denial makes sense to me from inside yard. I don't think there's anything else that you're asking for, is there?
Uh, no. No, we have, we're okay with coverage. We're okay with height stories.
Yeah, three feet. Print will want one proposed. Thirteen ninety to fourteen forty-five.
Right. And in that, I included the area of the steps. I'm not sure technically if they do that, but I included it all.
But they're not covered.
Do you want to take a look at that?
I don't think those would be if they're not covered. You have approval from the Starkwood or the Starkwood Review Board?
Not yet, no. We saw them last week and we'll be seeing them again at their next meeting next week. And they did a pretty thorough review. They asked for some aesthetic revisions, but they were comfortable with the mass and the size of the additions. So we're making some revisions in terms of some of the trim details and the window divisions and things like that. But otherwise, they didn't have any objections to the roof construction and the porch placement in front of the property. At least not yet.
So far so good.
How about the windows and everything else?
Um, the window, in terms of locations and sizes, they're fine. But in terms of design, we're actually gonna be removing the divided light patterns and just going with the straight. So we're updating that to kind of simplify the, some of the details. So yeah, I think the feedback from the last meeting was that we'll update based on, on their comments to simplify the design and we'll meet one more time and then they should be ready to set up a public hearing. So the public hearing will be done probably early October.
So do, I don't think there's anything we need to adjust here unless we want to, unless you want to remove the, uh, the steps for next time.
Yeah, I can do that.
What's it, bring it down to twenty-three? I mean, it doesn't affect it, but.
No.
You're not asking for variance, which is for the sake of accuracy. I guess that would be up to you.
Okay. Sure, I can update it.
Um, it's the, uh, the, uh...
Yeah, I included both sets of steps in that because I wasn't sure how you would calculate that, so.
They gotta be covered for us to be calculating. I think so, right? Yes.
Okay. So we'll remove that.
If they're not covered, they're not calculated.
Yeah. If we lose a half percent, then we might be down to twenty-three.
Yeah, but it's better for. Did you get a pool in your minority?
Hmm?
Did you get a pool in your minority?
So did you ever live there?
I lived there from nineteen fifty-two or three to fifty-two when I went to service. I was gone for several years and I lived there for a year and a half because I got married after that.
Great, did you marry?
My parents were the only, they're only the second owners of the house.
Did you bury any treasures in the wall or anything?
Oh, really?
There was a big pool. It seems like thirty-two.
That is big.
It's funny, we've looked for like height marks. We figured maybe gun.
No, because they graded it all.
No, I mean the height for kids.
Oh, no, because I was.
Psychology's gotta be something.
I was, uh, I was born in forty-four. I was eight or nine when I moved up there. So my sister was at a high school and my other sister was with a junior.
That's dramatic.
No. It was a, it was well-built out.
It's amazing.
Then we need the wall, the back wall, because of the crack and everything. That's all.
And that was really just.
It is, right? Seventeen and a half feet. Is that accurate from, from your survey?
Seventeen point four feet.
And you need sixteen point six, right? According to what we would calculate.
Why do we need sixteen? I thought we needed ten, I'm surprised.
No, because this is a small lot, so it's, it's, side yard setbacks are considered differently.
Okay. I'd be like half a meter or something, but I might call this point.
It's sixteen, it's roughly sixteen and a half feet.
And she's got more.
And she's got more.
She's got more.
So we don't need side yard setbacks?
We have eighteen point four collective. So eighteen point four feet.
Fifty. Yeah, it's fifty point zero eight, correct?
Is the lot width, yes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it seems to me that when we done with this idea, that.
No, I'm, I'm not sure. It's, it's, so it's every foot times four inches, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sure it's sixteen, just, just.
Well, sure.
I don't, I'm not sure if that's the case. Because I was coming out with a different number, but I'm not sure.
It's not, it's not totally clear.
I guess what section?
I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, one thirty-four seventeen eight.
It seems that we still need a minimum of seven and a half. Although I seem to recall this having been done much differently in the past.
Well, it, it sort of says that you need seven and a half feet for each side. But as long as you have a total of, uh, that would meet the width times four inches.
We got, we got twelve here and we got eleven-six there.
Yeah. So I, I think they do, I agree with you. You got, you got sixteen point seven, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you have eleven plus six point five. So it gives you the total you need. Uh, I just don't think you need to meet seven on each side. I think it's written such that you have to have seven and a half feet on each side or accumulate total of the two widths, uh, or setbacks that are under the width of the front yard property line times four inches and meet that. Like, you know, I think that's something we handled before, correct?
Um, yeah, I think we have done that one before. I'm trying to remember the one.
Yeah, but for instance, that, the other one on Garden Street, where they only have.
Oh, Daley's.
Daley's, they only have a foot on one side.
The one side, yes.
Yeah, so take the aggregate of the, the.
The two side yard setbacks, I think they had twenty-five feet or something on the left-hand side.
And one on the other side.
Yeah, much, yeah, vast amount.
One on the north side.
Okay.
Uh, no, actually on the south side.
Well, why don't we do this?
The north side had a foot.
That's why I said the north side had a foot.
Yeah, we don't have to decide this right now, but you know, it's just that we're just gonna double check to make sure this is how we've done it. But I believe it is, as long as we have the cumulative feet that we need, meaning the front yard width times four inches, as long as we can meet that, or which appears you have by just about a foot.
But we'll confirm that. We can always remove it from the application.
All right, so.
Great.
And with regards to the front yard setback, it's, as far as raising the roof, right? I mean, it does implicate, I believe, I mean, that's the one way the building inspector was looking at it. That's why they called for the front yard, because there is, again, there's no, is there a covered porch that's coming in here? No.
Not now, so we are.
No, so you're just dealing with the building?
No, there's, she's building a covered porch.
This is new.
Oh, okay, so then obviously it's implicated. So the question is, are we gonna, well, we're gonna run it right straight back here anyway. We'll give the full twenty-five feet. We'll get the full variance from here to here.
Sure, we can.
That's really what we're gonna look at anyway. So just the fact that you're doing any construction here, I think even if this wasn't gonna get covered.
Right.
Um, I think we have to deal with this.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so the, the last thing is notifications. You know how to do that.
I do. Should we go over?
Yeah.
Early's on one side, a model on the other, a church or a school on the other side. And then the house next to the church to the right, I don't know who that is. The purple house there?
The purple?
Yeah.
Is your way on market?
Yeah. Uh, let's go. One, two, three, four. I don't know how many more we need. How do you need? You got, the early's gonna be on the north side. The models, no, the early's on the north side, the model's on the south side. Catholic school's in across the street and then the purple house.
You probably need to deal with the properties behind you because you, well, you may not be looking for a side yard setback. So that's the only way they'd be.
The property behind you, there's a, there's a brook in, you mean Church Street?
So this strip is the Village Property. I think that's the, the brook. And then I included these on the initial list, but that's why.
It, it doesn't hurt. Just, just let them know, because we're still not uncertain about the side yard and they would be somewhere affected by this.
Well, there's also visual, although we're not granting, you don't mean thirty-three Church Street?
And there is that one of these.
It's not Simon's. Yeah. Why would you need thirty-three Church Street?
Where, where is that relation?
It's not in sixty-three.
Sixty-three?
Yeah.
Well.
There's three people on Church.
If there's a setback, a side yard setback issue.
Yeah, but they're rear.
Pardon me?
They're in the rear. They're on the next street behind.
But still, it, it would, it would jut out. I mean, it's not necessarily just in the front, right?
Yeah, they're, you can't even see these three houses from her house. But they can probably see hers from their second floor.
Because they're at a higher level.
There's a bunch of trees behind there.
Well, whether there's trees or not, I, it just doesn't turn to put it in.
No, I don't see any reason for them. People already plan on notifying them. I think it.
I think it's better just to do it.
All right. You never will.
Okay, so.
So do you wanna circle whichever ones you want us to notify?
Well, you got twenty Garden Street, twenty-four.
Well, you've highlighted each one here, right?
Yeah, that's the list I made up, but if you agree with that, then.
I don't see, I don't see a need to do anybody else differently. So you.
What's the building called?
That's the strip.
That's the land, the creek.
Yeah. That's appropriate.
Oh, it's the creek. That's the, that's the prime creek there.
Yeah, but it's appropriate. I mean, it's just.
So we'll notify.
Do you wanna look at what's been highlighted?
So, I think I have that list, but I can't.
Yeah.
We notify and you bring the cards back.
And you, but you send us an actual notice to send them, is that?
Yeah, well, we will, um, get Greg to follow through on the application.
And we'll double check.
Yeah, make sure. I think he's still.
Yeah. I mean, if there were no side yard setbacks here at issue, and there may not be, and if it was only front yard, we'd only be talking about this property, that property and these two, you know, I mean, really. But because there might be an implication with it, it's not gonna hurt to find out. It's gonna be minimal anyway.
And so what is the date you're proposing for the public hearing?
Let's see.
We've been meeting on the Thursdays beginning of the month, right?
Yeah, the first and, the first and third.
First and third.
Yeah.
Well, um, let's wait, come back.
Pardon me? Oh, great.
The feed, what's the twenty-first?
I know you're emailing me at times, but I usually, I'm trying to wait to hear what Greg says initially because I don't wanna be stepping on his toes in whatever he's doing.
So we could.
So I checked in independently with Jeff, find out whether things were going all right, after I spoke and left a message for Greg.
We can probably do it on the fifth, I think, if we're gonna have enough people here.
Yeah.
My birthday, I don't think I'll be here.
Well, I'll be here.
I can be. My daughter's birthday, but she's in Los Angeles.
Pardon me?
Yes, yeah.
I'm gonna have family down, so I'm here.
This is yours, Karen.
Okay. I can be here.
You wanna get it done soon as possible.
All right, so it sounds like we'll have enough.
Yeah, okay.
And Greg.
Happy birthday.
I hear ya.
Going to race track.
So.
I don't know, I might go up to.
Anything that.
Next to thirteen.
Next week.
We gotta put the ad in the paper next week, so it's gotta, yeah, if you get them out, spend.
It's gotta be added and gotta go when you get it. Is it a week, seven or ten days?
I think it's in around seven or eight.
Usually the way Greg, um, states it is if he can get it in tomorrow, or if he gets you the letter tomorrow, then everything happens.
Soon as you get it out, the better, yeah.
Yeah, this is like the administrative stuff that he often handles.
He's not back, he's a clerk.
But we'll, we'll converse with him tomorrow and make sure, uh, you know, feel free to contact him tomorrow and we'll also alert him that you're interested in signing that for a notification issue.
And we're definitely shooting for the third.
Yeah. Just get it, get it done. Excited.
For your birthday or for?
I always like to see the transformation in a house. You know?
Yeah, we don't wanna change it too much. Just a little extra room.
Where's the stairway gonna be? That's gonna be interesting.
It's going to, well, the smallest bedroom, which is my daughter's room.
The middle room.
The middle room, which is probably your room, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Uh, we're just gonna take a little piece out of it.
Oh, okay.
And her bed will just slide under the stairs. So my kids, my sons can stomp up the stairs.
Okay. Why don't you have your thoughts?
Okay, interesting. Interesting.
Yeah, there's nobody from the pub, well, obviously it's just a workshop, so.
He's got special expertise with the creek, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No fishing back there, right?
I spent a lot of time in that creek. When I was growing up, a lot of water.
There is.
Yes, it's good.
Well, it choked weeds.
When I was growing up, there was coming down, I mean, it was full. It was full.
These are separate packages.
By the Christian church. It came by Collins Flower Shop.
This is.
And that was just always full.
Well, the spring fall, like it'll get active again in the fall. In the summer, it's kinda slows down, it's sort of choked with stuff, but then when the vegetation dies down.
We've had a lot of fun there.
It'll be out again.
Lot of fun there.
Salivary, that's true.
Nah, just a little minnow and stuff like that.
Did you need more copies of the D for the front yard or?
Yeah, two, I gave you another one.
I have two more.
How many did you have?
I need, I brought three. You have one. You want more copies?
Give us a second one, just a second.
This is a better, this is a clearer copy, the other one.
We're not gonna do anything with it until we meet.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I have a sheet.
Change files here.
And John, thank you. I wanted to let you know, I hope it's okay that I emailed you.
No, that's fine.
But I don't really expect a response from you, cause I know Greg is the.
It helped that I double checked, that's all.
Yeah, now that's sometimes.
I mean, I just wanted to make sure everything was.
Weeks go by before I share with Greg, so I didn't qualify somebody else's list.
I still don't even have his phone number.
Door was open a couple of weeks ago. Doors wide open, no cars anywhere, and had a storm door, it was cracked, I'm locking the door, ringing the doorbell. Nobody was like, I seen a couple days later and said, you know, I looked your house today. Really? What time? It's always, it's not a car in the driveway, I did run it wide open. Really? I said, yeah. Oh, hmm, I wonder where I was.
That's my old gang.
No time.
No, there was no cars, both the car and the door.
He wasn't answering my phone call, because I have his phone number. Tried to get in touch with him a few times, I have to drive to his house.
Well, you can call him, you can leave your door wide open, I like nobody a lot. My neighbor, Charles Green.
Do we have your other packet of papers? Are they in the mailbox?
Four in there.
They should be in the file, because we submitted this.
I didn't look at the, I didn't look at the mailbox behind the. Now, do you have a look behind the mailbox? Were they in there?
Well, we definitely, did you have to say anything new?
There's nothing new sent, no.
Since what you gave us, so it should be, I think I put everything in there.
Because we haven't really formally presented. You allowed us to come the first meeting and kinda give you a quick intro. So there's, there aren't any new materials. We've been working, as you know, a lot of the historic review board. There will most certainly be revisions to the proposed building plans. But in terms of the, the footprint and the site, I mean, we're essentially talking about this thing. So we wanted an opportunity to start our formal presentation to you, get your feedback, see if there are any concerns. Clear up a couple of questions we have, so that once we get through the secret process, which is hopefully getting underway soon. We'll kind of be ready to go and finalize our applications with doorboard and plant board and eat things rolling.
So you've, you've been to see them since you came here last night?
We've seen everybody. A few, a few times, but.
Where are they with the idea of what you might do with the building at this point?
Well, they are giving careful consideration. We've done a pretty extensive study of the conditions of the existing building. And, um, and reviewed, you know, what, what historic members are remaining and the value and integrity of those. And, um, now we're beginning the EFA review, the secret process. The, the historic review board has just voted on consultant, but they'd like the village to hire to assist them with that review process. And we hope that's going to begin to take place within the next couple of weeks, that review.
Is that, is that decide whether or not you're gonna stay with the same building or rebuild it?
Well, we hope, we hope that, um, through their review of the EAF, they'll realize that, you know, the, the impact that we mitigated with the proposed new building. Um, because it, it seems from all boards that the biggest impact is the loss of existing historic buildings, so that's why the historic review board is.
How much historic is, significant is it? I mean, are they proven?
Um, not, not really. I mean, that's what they had us look into quite a bit. We looked at a lot of old maps and, um, or kind of trying to determine if there was any architectural significance or any significant people who had occupied it or built it. And there doesn't seem to be any strong case for that. And we've looked at the actual building itself very carefully and given the fact that it's been modified quite extensively over time and that a lot of the original historic fabric no longer exists. They seem to be coming to that conclusion, but I don't want to assume that's where they are, that's where we hope it'll be. And I think a big part of them reaching that decision is beginning to look at what we're proposing for the property. And hopefully realizing that a new structure will mitigate the loss.
And the new structure's gonna be what? Five foot, how many feet away from Jimmy's building?
We're proposing to move it five feet away from Jimmy's building. And just so you're aware, the plans that I submitted when, when we submitted this application to you back in June were kind of our first set of plans, and we have gotten a little bit of feedback from the historic review board regarding reappearance. And it's gonna change pretty significantly, um, as far as the facade goes. But the footprint is what we're presenting to you or what we did back in June is pretty close to.
Five feet back and how many, how? Five feet.
Five feet from Jimmy's building, and we wanna place it pretty much right up on the front property line, um, in line with the other buildings on Main Street.
So this discussion here is basically just sort of reacquainting us to the project that, that, for what we looked at the last time?
Yes, and we got a little bit of clarification. Um, in my original application, I had noted that we would either be applying for a front yard variance or a special permit. And after looking further into the code and talking with a consultant we're working with, it seems clear to us, although you might wanna look into that yourselves, that we'd be applying for a special permit to place the building on the front property line. And that's from section one thirty-four dash nine D four. And so.
You had some, some of Jimmy Hartford's property?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Right, cause he, you know, in that case, he raised a property.
He raised, but he also brought the, the steps right out to the.
Yeah, cause he, because he was raising the property, the steps had to come out further.
He had to buy the property.
And to buy the property from the city, from the village too, yeah.
Yeah.
Where was this?
Hartford's building.
Hartford's building.
Right next.
First building on the right up to the gas station. It's a dark colored building.
Oh, okay.
He didn't hit the bat, because he didn't realize that the foundation was collapsing because of some kind of leakage. The more and more they went into the building, they realized that the whole foundation, I mean, they took the whole foundation out, had to put a homeless foundation out. Because he was putting the office stuff downstairs.
The office down there, yeah.
They really did, more than what he planned for, unforeseen.
So you're thinking you need a special permit because of the houses to be used?
Well, the way we're reading the code here is that, um, if two or more buildings on each side of our proposed structure are within two hundred feet on the same block and on the same side of the street are at the property line, then we can bring our building in line with the average setback of those buildings.
That's what we look at.
For a special permit is what it's encouraged in the code. And technically it's a special use permit or a special warrant, and that refers to a section of requirements needed for a special use permit, which I believe we have covered in our, our application as far as the materials we've submitted. So as far as we're concerned, that's what we'd be applying for, but if.
What about, uh, side yards?
Side yards, we're actually gonna be okay with, um, with the new building, because we're proposing to, this is kind of a mini version of that, but, um, that was your existing plan and the building right up next to it. And the proposed plan, we're actually proposing to pull the building five feet off of, um, one twenty-four Main Street, which is the Silverstone.
Right, I understand.
So we have a five yard setback on each side, um, ten at the rear and forty at the front.
That's the R one district?
B one.
Uh, B one. So you're making a conformity?
Correct.
On, on the side yards. Yeah, so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll just double check what we did with Jimmy, cause we went through this whole thing with special permit and everything. Remember that whole issue?
Yeah.
When he came in and he argued something that was a little bit different than what the vote allowed?
Yes.
Okay. You were there then, right?
I believe I was there, yes.
I don't know if it goes back on the order.
Yeah, and we said, no, that's not, we don't, we don't agree. Go back.
Right, come back, come back.
Come back, come back again. Come back and try again.
Right. So, uh, anyway, uh.
So if you don't agree with us, let us know as soon as possible.
No, no.
So we agree.
We've been over this on the same side of the street.
Okay.
Just a different block.
So can you explain that again, why, why you think it needs a special permit?
Well, basically, cause the language, because you have, uh, the way this is written, uh, uh, we're just gonna double check whether we went really with a front yard setback issue, uh, in the end. I wrote something out that dealt with interpreting this section. I just wanna just double check that. Net, net of this, with regards to the section, if there's a building, this is covering the B one section, if there's a building within two hundred feet on the right, two hundred feet on the left, you take the average of those two buildings where their structures improvements are relative to the front property line, and you take the average of the two, right?
Right.
I mean, that's in essence, I think, what this says. And the other two are flush to the property line.
Right, yeah. One is over and one is behind, so we're gonna split the difference.
I mean, it would, it would be more of an issue if you set the building too far back.
Right, correct.
Because then it would fall out of character with, with the business.
Yeah, everything else is right on the property line.
And, and that would make it.
It's not over.
Right, it's not over.
Yeah, in fact, our existing building itself, so.
That seems to be the way it is in Colesbury.
I mean, you've got the structure at Carolyn's Restaurant, it is the two houses in the back.
Catherine, yeah.
It's sort of like a little awkward, just, just that offset back a little, it makes a nice little bit of a garden area.
Right street.
My reading of this is that, basically what you do.
Crazy in the street.
Yeah, yeah, we don't really know, we threw, I gotta double check what we did with Jimmy.
Apparently, my landlord wanted a case.
But it, it's striking me in the end that we actually granted it.
They have no access to the back house.
A front yard variance instead of a special permit.
Can build a fence up, they have no.
And I, I gotta relook at the reasons why.
Yeah, because.
But I, I don't think either way, what we did, it, we, we had concerns, just like we would have concerns with your property, that it would be consistent with the other properties on either side. Uh, his was different, because he had this gas station that is sort of. But the rest, so we looked at the rest of the buildings going, uh, down Main Street. And to find out, and we actually did a site visit to see where the line was, where they met up, and where we thought it would be appropriate to put his, uh, front, uh, front of his improvement of his house to the property line. So we went through all that, but we, we compared, and what we did was, we were looking, I think, in relation to issues of front yard setbacks and, and the frontage feet wise, and just trying to figure out what the average was. I think we gravitated away from special permit, but I'm looking, I'm looking at this and I'm just gonna double check. And it, I, it's apples and oranges to which, which thing you go by, because the idea is that we want the building towards the front.
My, my reading of this is if you put it at the average, you wouldn't even need a variance. But if you, um, but that, but you would need a special permit if something about the use of the building required you to have more, more space, more setback. Because six, uh, one thirty-four sixteen is about special uses.
Yeah, this is, I don't think this is necessarily a use issue. I mean, it's business.
So it seems to be, it would be.
And it's not a variance with any other use that's up and down Main Street. I mean, it's gonna be a business, I imagine, right?
Right.
So, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll give you clarification on it, but, uh, I, in the end, it's not gonna make a difference. You know, where the building is actually gonna go. I mean, it's, it's gonna be in conformity with the other buildings.
As long as, yeah, as long as it's where you're covering all the bases.
Yeah, I, I, your issues are more with, uh, HDRB and whether they're gonna let you set this building back in a way that, you know, for, that they're gonna allow you to restructure the building or rebuild it or.
Yeah, so that remains to be some work.
Yeah, the issues here are nothing compared to that.
Okay, I think in regards to everything else, as far as zoning goes, we're able to accommodate parking, parking, and all of that. So I think our, our main zoning issue is the building right on the property line. However, the one question came up at the planning board, and they did kind of defer to, to you guys. We are proposing some fencing, if there's fencing between, um, these two properties that's falling down and wanted to place. We're required to put in screening, either by way of fence or planting, between the B one and residential district, so.
Was that to the rear?
Well, these are all residential lots, so.
To the rear?
Yeah, to the side and the rear. So the code is silent on this, the fencing in the B one. It's very, pretty. It's very, pretty clear about fencing in residential districts as far as height in relation to the property line. But in the B one, it's silent. So, the planning board, you know, didn't really say much about it. I think our, our intent is to do planting around most of the property because a lot of the adjacent property lines already have fences. So, the idea of doing back-to-back fencing isn't really part of us. But on this property line, where a fence is coming down and we're gonna be replacing it, um...
Which property is that?
This is, um...
That's commercial.
This is B one, so up to this point. And so, we were planning potentially, the existing fence is six feet, the six-foot stockade fence. Um, we certainly wouldn't go higher than six feet, we could go lower or somewhere in that area. But if, if the code is silent, how, how is that dealt with?
It, it, it's sort of in our discretion, and I think we've allowed six-foot fences in around, uh, the, uh, commercial structures to, uh, abutting residential. But I think it's something that we might look at in when it comes to, really be more interested in what your proposals are. And perhaps it might be a notice issue to neighboring properties to get their input. But you said most of them have their own fences, they, they really wanna...
They have four-foot fences, though, but residential...
Well, there's six. And even though this lot is in the B one, it's actually a residence.
How much lighting will it be on the property?
Um, they, we will have some bollard, um, night sky lighting around the parking area, but the exact, I don't know, we don't know yet.
Because that's usually an issue with regards to fences or the nature of what you might need. But everything is, you know, it's, it's fact-specific. And, uh, it, what, what you're putting in, maybe we'd probably need to get input. Uh, that's probably one of the big notice issues.
Yeah, we wanna notice, notice, notify the neighbors, if you're gonna, you know, anyone who would be impacted by a six-foot fence. Or anything over four feet, in fact.
You know...
Where are you planning to start the, the six-foot fencing at some?
So, right now, we're planning on starting at, um...
That's McCaffrey's property, right?
With McCaffrey.
And planning on starting at about here where the building steps back. And that's kind of where it is now.
Is there a six-foot fence there?
There is.
But what's, what kind of fence?
Highly irregular.
Six-foot stockade fence.
It's, it's, it's... It is stockade?
It is up until back here. There's actually, I don't know what you call that, but it's actually what we would consider replacing this with. It's a nicer looking...
It's like a four-foot solid two-meter.
See, this four, you know, and I, just from the way the other members have... We do look at the aesthetics of the nature of the fence that you're gonna put in. And, you know, when it's totally in a residential area, uh, we gravitate away from excessive height and from, uh, density of the fence. Uh, it, when it comes to a situation this, like this, again, it's commercial, it's where you're up against another commercial as opposed to commercial up against residential portions. And fact-specific is to the lighting that you're gonna use and so on and so forth. So, this is just giving you a flavor of what we look at. And, and does anybody see anything different there?
So, you've got a five-foot minimum, basically, between the district, between the districts according to one thirty-one A two? And it can be higher, I mean, here it says the planning board, but it could be required to be higher to block light. So, if you have lights that are pointing or visible in that direction, that would be something we're planning for.
So, you know, it's four feet in the residential zones where we rarely will look, we have no exceptions to even variance, but this one, it looks like it's gotta be a minimum of five feet and possibly higher. Although, when you're, when you're adjacent to residential properties, it makes sense to give them a, give them a voice and a, give them a chance to respond.
It can be a hedge too, it doesn't have to be...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you can specify those different proposals, and we're gonna hear what the public has to say with regards to what you're proposing. And, and, yeah, well, but...
Assuming, assuming they show up, yes.
But then, also, look at the nature of your lights, the intensity of the lights, you know, how, how the light is casted, you know, to the ground or surrounding area. I mean, all those will probably be factors, you know?
It's funny, it says, "No public hearing shall be required in question of fencing."
Interesting.
The what?
For, for, in the B one zone?
Yeah, for the planning board, they're talking about the planning board.
No public hearing.
And they bounce it to us, that these, these guys are amazing.
And said, "No public care required?"
That's what it says, um, there, just for the fencing part, for the hedge part.
Well, it's something to keep, uh, 'cause you, you can probably get a, a lot of different viewpoints. 'Cause there's been a lot of different residential viewpoints about what nature of fences they have. Of course, we've had all those issues come before us and... What we have to do is make sure that it doesn't really interfere with residential use of property. I mean, we can't, we, we can't control, well, we could partially control lighting, but we don't want fences going above like five, six, six feet is really the limit we really ever go to.
Yeah, I mean, we've had situations on the other side with the, the residential tenants. Everyone around the applicant says, "We want a six-foot fence," but we don't give the six-foot fence variance. You know, we don't, we don't do that because...
It becomes stockade.
You know, you get stockade fencing, you have a room behind stockades.
And it just looks compartmentalized, you know, it's...
See, see what Phil Efferman thinks.
He's like one, I think, with the fence that we sort of think would be the one to kind of follow.
Copy, that's good.
He's on the other side of the creek, but I know he's, he's paying attention to what's happening.
Yeah.
He was out measuring, I was there measuring the fence, and he was out measuring.
Yeah, we've been lurking behind the fences.
So, you, you, I mean, you're gonna be very practical about this, I'm sure. So, just try to, you know, think things out, and as long as it just doesn't become a glowing nightmare, you know?
So, so it's just something we're gonna be working through. It sounds like primarily with your board, even though the planning board wants to see the screening, they were just concerned when we said, "Okay, well, we're gonna put some fencing around the property line and, and potentially five to six feet," because that's not allowed. And it's not that it isn't allowed, it's just not mentioned.
Yeah, they were responding, thinking, referring to the residential.
Right.
No, it's definitely, it's definitely mentioned.
Right, for the, in the planning as a screening, whether it's, yeah. So, I referred that to that section of the code, um, but then, and it says in that section that it should be on the lot line, so that means... Okay, we'll come back to that.
So, I don't think that, I think you have a sort of an idea of where we might go. That's the most important thing. And just think, if you were residing back there, whatever, we just don't want then the residents in the back to start saying, "Well, now we need seven-feet fences." So, what you do with the lighting may have an effect on what they might be saying. So, we'll, we'll just double check and look into the notice issue of that. We don't have to decide that right now. Because I don't think, I mean, you're not gonna be necessarily sitting on these plans to go forward. But are you, uh, do you see these plans as being your finalized plans?
No, definitely not, I mean, we're...
So, you'll be back before us again almost in a workshop?
We will, I mean, we're hoping, and, and that will probably come after we endow a footprint with the historic review board. But let me ask you, if the footprint gets tweaked over time, but we know it's pretty much sitting in this location and we come before you and we start to move forward and get approvals in terms of its location, if, if that gets, you know, massaged a little with the historic review board, but it's not changing what we're asking of you, is there any reason why we can't proceed with a public hearing with your board?
What, before you're done?
Or is it with the H D R B?
Yeah.
Well, we have to know the definitive, um, you know, distance that the structure's gonna be from the front yard, property line, everything, we can't be just guessing.
Right, that, that I feel confident we'll be able to define. But, but let's say part of the building, you know, its relation to the front property line, we'll be able to define. But if it, if it expands or it lengthens and it's not affecting our request to you, does that have a bearing or do we need to come back to you?
Well, it's, if, if it wouldn't affect going into those setbacks, but say for instance, they decide, "Okay, we want you to rebuild this, uh, you're gonna build it up, up against this building," and then you fall into a side yard setback issue.
Right.
Especially if you're completely demolishing the house, building and you're restructuring, rebuilding it, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't envision having all those answers for a while yet until we get, at least some, some good feedback from them in regards to the massing and, um, the location.
I think if you get, once you get close to them, you just come back to us. I mean, we, we're very familiar with the plan. I, I don't think it's gonna be that sophisticated. We'll, we'll just double check, uh, the, the special permit, front yard variance.
It, it doesn't serve anybody to have us give you, you know, give a variance and then you have to come back to us if something changes in the H D R B.
Because you would have to come back to us.
Yeah.
It won't, it won't take that long.
But I think this is great that we're, you know, keep us in the loop so that we're primed and reminded of what, what the issues are.
The two main issues are fence height, lighting, uh, you know, even though we don't technically deal with lighting, we deal with fencing and lighting affects the fencing.
And, and then the, then the...
And the front yard setback, special permit issue, uh, whether...
Can I ask a question? I was just thinking as I was looking at different buildings in town. If your building, um, like, there are some buildings that kind of have, like, an awning, a, a kind of a little roof over maybe the first floor windows. It's not a porch, it doesn't have posts, but it's more than trim. It's, it's kind of like a little, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean, a little roof.
How, how, is that something that requires a variance?
An awning?
It doesn't come down to...
Are you looking like the Putnam County news building? What they got on top of it?
I don't mean an awning like, uh...
Fabric, you mean, you know, you mean like a real chingles or something, yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of like a little...
It's like a little, little roofette, little roofette that goes over the...
It's, it's, it's...
It's not covered, which the porch is covered below.
It's not really a covering at all, it's, it's just a, it's a, it's decorative.
Right.
And they keep some, some...
I've seen them along, right along Main Street. So, what would their function be, maybe shade to the bottom floor windows?
Yeah.
Um, it's really more than trim. Like, sometimes there's like a piece of trim over the five-floor windows, but there's a couple buildings that have almost a little...
It could judge out for like a foot or two, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll double check it, 'cause there are roofline issues where, uh, you know, uh, structures are built, whether they're sheds or whatever, that have, you know, long dri, uh, drip line edges to, to, to the roof. And we wanna make sure that they're never like intruding onto other property, neighboring properties and, and having drip lines into neighboring properties.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. I know there's a building on this side of the street, I think it's further toward the train tracks, that that sort of piece definitely juts out over the sidewalk, but there's nothing under it but the sidewalk.
No, I get, I get what you're saying. I, there's a little bit of an issue, we dealt with that with, I won't, you know, specify the property, but we were cautioning the, uh, the builder, the property owner to, to make sure that the drip lines were not entering into the, uh, neighboring properties that they state.
Okay.
So, the other one on Main might be grandfathered in, so they might not have needed variance to put that over the sidewalk, but they might own that part of the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't remember a section that specifically deals with it offhand, I'd have to look back at it.
Just curious to read.
Yeah, well, I mean, there are, you know, considerations. I mean, if you own the neighboring property and they build roofs that actually drip lined in that, you know, and they're running out a portion of your property, you'd have a concern. And that's, that's what we're trying to avoid. But whether or not that gets calculated into setback areas or, uh, we'll just double check on that.
Are you planning, uh, the second floor apartment as a long-term residence?
Uh, it's an apartment, um, I'm not gonna live there and I'm not gonna rent it to start with. I'm just gonna use it for my family, but I'm not sure what your question is.
Whether it's gonna be a short-term rental or a long-term rental or owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied would be a better description of that. I'm sure I might be a land market.
Is that a marketing issue?
Uh, no, I'm, I was just curious about, uh...
But the longer it's so short, like, it's not...
Not Airbnb, not Airbnb, not a guesthouse, but, uh, you know, it's gonna be... As, as more and more apartments are coming off the, going off the long-term rental market, we're watching this closely.
No, I just, um, don't know if I'm ready to be a land market. I'm still having trouble with, um...
With developer, I can imagine, right?
Actually, I had a question, just going back to what you were just asking about with the, the overhangs. Um, because even if it's not like a significant, um, like, one or two feet, but we could see like some of the architectural details we might add would include brackets on the front facade. And I know there are provisions in the code for corner suits and inings to hang into setbacks, but in this case, it would actually be hanging over onto the village property. So, I think that's something...
Is this something that's already proposed at this point that you guys are looking at or are they advised?
Well, no, no, but I can imagine that we will because I'm sure this won't be in the street facade. And if we wanna bring the building up to the property line, we just wanna be aware of that, that ornamentation of the facade so that it's kind of in keeping with the village character and the, like, the home organization. Probably not significantly, but...
One or few inches, yeah.
Yeah.
I do, I don't remember the section offhand, I don't even think there is one. I mean, I've read through the code several times, I can't...
Ornaments get six inches into a required yard? So, if you're, if you're already, um, inside the setback, you would need a variance for that, I guess? Or maybe, you know, if there's enough room, I would just say six inches, no big deal. And then the roof...
But, but what if, what if...
Well, it's not big and gaudy.
But that's into the yard, but what type of...
What about, what about a neighboring property? What about a neighboring property?
Well, I guess you would have to talk to the owner.
Yeah, talk to the village.
I think that's really what it comes down to because, uh... See, what this is saying is that in essence, uh, with the ornaments, that it, it, it can extend six, up to six inches into a side yard setback, I think, without having to be factored in to a side yard setback where the foot of the building is in relation to the property line. That, I think, is what it's allowing. But that's your, that's your property.
But in the front, if you're going right up to the property line, then...
Right, over it.
Maybe you should, maybe you should buy some of that thing in the village.
Well...
It's air rights.
Yeah, air rights.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like to avoid high or property...
It's sort of curious, because if the H D R B says, "We want you to put this ornamentation on because this is what we want,"
That's basically the village telling you.
Then you say, "Okay, the village is..."
Authorizing.
Then you go to the village and say, "Okay, they're telling us this is what we want."
Right.
You, you allow it, period. You know, that would be the way I would approach it.
Well, yeah, because if that's what they're telling them they have to do.
Yeah.
So, why would we have to give five with a variance if the village says, "This is what we want"?
I mean, if you owned a neighboring property, you wouldn't want somebody's portion of their house, even if it was on the second floor, overhanging onto your property. I mean, it's, it's just common sense. So, uh, the, in essence, what it would be is an air rights issue. You know, I mean, like in New York, I mean, it's not an open air, like, visual and buying out complete airspace, but you are interfering with airspace, aren't you?
So, I would encourage the H D R B to encourage you to...
You could just, you could get what, I mean, I don't know how it would be phrased, but it, it could be, I mean, potentially just an easement into, uh, the village, you know, property if that, they want the ornamentation, that you be, you know, I think...
Have you designed in front of the building it?
That's what we're working on and that's what we're thinking of, you know?
You know, you design it and you present it to them.
Right.
And they say, "This is what we want, this is great."
And just make it, make it clear that if the building's gonna be here, it's gonna, it is gonna come over a little bit. You get it on the minutes.
If they're, if they're gonna ask you to do specific design, have it there and let them look at it, they might say, "Yeah, but instead of doing this, let's do this."
Right.
So, at least you're, you know...
Great, okay.
We're trying.
So, we will hopefully see you before not too long.
So, if anything changes or you have new materials, we'll just, we'll get rid of the materials that, uh, whatever overrides, supersedes, but we'll keep the remainder, just so there isn't confusion.
Okay.
And just so you don't have to reproduce all of it. If that's workable, I mean.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great, very, yeah, updated.
Great, thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Did, did they give you a timeline, or you have no idea? And you wanna hang on to this for a moment?
Sure.
Thanks.
We don't have any minutes.
One thing you need is patience.
Yeah, well, the good thing is it's all interesting, you know, so, for me.
I'm glad, I'm glad you find it fun, as I said.
A timeline we love, but...
Anybody wanna move to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn in here, uh, the workshop.